There's a signing sheet here, so sign your name if you want to speak.
Yep.
Either for or against.
You can. And you. For. How are you doing?
Doing real well.
I know you got one.
Alright, anybody else you want to speak later?
So, Mike?
Thank you, you're the one.
Are you doing the comp plan under other business?
I know you got one.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I see, it's under the, under other business.
Regardless of everything, I still have to get at least one vote.
Well, if US Mail works.
They should. They said it should. What is it called? It's Christine Ellsworth, I don't know if you remember her.
Oh, hey.
Right. There he is. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call and be to order. The first item is the pledge. Sam.
Atletians in the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Kevin Breitski.
Here.
Brian Damons.
Here.
Abgiliyan. Pamela Michler Fish.
Here.
Barb Regnet.
Here.
Greg Sims.
Luther Williams.
Here.
Nikki Witkowski. Burns.
Here.
Also President Mike J. Bo and Attorney Scott Clark.
So we got six members.
You have a quorum, sir.
Okay. Any correspondence at this time?
There is not. There is just a question at the end.
Okay, we got new business. One case, I have my science is affecting me today, so bear with me. The case is Z zero dash two zero two four dash one zero, applicants are micro meters, locations east of Meridian Road and north of US Highway six Valparaiso, Liberty Township. Zoning is R one, low density, single family residential district. Request is rezoned parcels of land from R one, low density, single family residential district to CM, moderate intensity, uh, commercial district to align with matching existing commercial zoning CM abiding property.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, Bill Fernand, five seventy Dale Park Road, Valparaiso, Indiana. I'm here tonight on behalf of the petitioner, uh, Michael Nader, sitting here in the first row behind me. This is a public hearing tonight, so I did provide certified mailing to joining owners as required and provided the affidavit to your staff, uh, ten days ago indicating all those letters were in fact sent out. So the, uh, petition that you have before you tonight, as the president indicated, is, uh, to amend a certain portion of, uh, property from rural, um, from R one to commercial moderate. And if you look at your, uh, screen that's in front of you or up behind you, uh, that identifies the areas of the property, we're hoping to rezone from R one to CM. And if it looks like Mr. J. Bo is highlighting through there, that's the area, it's about six acres, uh, that is currently zoned R one, that we would like to rezone to CM. And if you're, if you're looking at the parcel, um, uh, the southern, I guess, half or so of that parcel is already zoned commercial moderate. And, uh, lack of a better term, what we're really trying to do is sort of square off the zoning of the parcel. The property immediately to the west, as you'll see in commonly, I refer to it as the Luke oil or Luke, uh, gas station parcel, that is already zoned CM. And the northern half of that parcel is, is zoned CM as well. So what we're simply trying to do is extend that and match that zoning line to the east. The dimensions of that property, uh, ultimately, uh, we were looking at around, uh, what is the dimension of that? Around six hundred feet, so in the east-west direction, and the north-south direction is around two hundred and sixty feet. So, uh, that area would just simply, uh, encompass CM and square off and, and match that up. There are two parcels out there today. Uh, there's kind of an L-shaped parcel that is owned by Terry and Ted Clark and I'm waiting for Mike to move the map there a little bit. And so this northern half, and I'll show it, this map may help a little bit too, where he's highlighting, um, this area highlighted in yellow is already zoned R one. And that will remain R one. That's owned by Mr. Clark and, uh, miss, miss, uh, Terry Clark and.
Terry Cook.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then this area highlighted in blue, that's a parcel that's already owned by Mr. Neder. And then the remaining parcel is owned by the others, and that would also be zoned CM. So what we're looking to rezone is just this small area I've highlighted in green on this map from R one to C one. At this point in time, there's no specific plan for the property, although Mr. Neder does operate his landscape operation on his parcel at this time. And so in order to fully utilize his property, he would like to be able to expand that to the north. So the development plan, uh, would come to you at the appropriate time, once this property, if it is zoned C, CM, will come before the Plan Commission and the various Development Review Committees with all of the plans with respect to layout, infrastructure, buffering, all of those other things that, uh, are all part of an appropriate development plan. We were here, uh, last week at the Development Review Committee and went through the project, and I, I did not sense any real resistance there. Uh, most seemed to think it was a reasonable request to extend and sort of square off this zoning for you today. Mr. J. Bo has been working with the engineers for Mr. Neder to make sure that the legal descriptions are all correct and we'll get that all finalized at the appropriate time. So ultimately, what you would see there is that north twenty acres would remain as R one. And then you would have about fifteen acres on the south, and that would all be zoned CM, that would abut with, uh, US Highway six. And looking at your comprehensive plan, uh, this is consistent with the area, it's consistent with the growth plan. It's on US Highway six, and we're subject to all of those overlay requirements, which we're fully aware of. It, all of the parcels are being designed and sized to meet with your current ordinance standards as well. And another item you would look to when rezoning property, in particular, are there any sensitive environmental features on the property, and there are none. Uh, there are a few trees, but there's really nothing out there of significance or importance. And we think that because of the nature of the area along US Highway six, the protections you have in place with your overlay and all of your other guidance with your ordinance, we think this is a fair and reasonable request to expand the zoning to CM in that area we've asked you for. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that, uh, you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing, so, uh, the director has to read the rules of conduct first?
Yep.
Conducted hearings. At a public hearing before the commission, the petitioner and proponents shall first present the facts and arguments in support of the case. Those who oppose the petitioner shall follow. The petitioner shall have rebuttal. It shall be within the discretion of the commission to impose any time limitation, either the petitioner or the respondent, and to limit public comment to those determined by state statute to be interested parties. Written remonstrances shall be accepted by the commission, but need not be in the commission's record. This then concludes the public hearing. To maintain orderly procedure, each side's members without interruption by the, um, in the presentation of the case, the burden shall be upon the petitioner to supply all information necessary for a clear understanding of the problem. The commission may continue the hearing when, in its judgment, the petitioner has not provided sufficient evidence on which to make a determination. Every person appearing before the commissioner shall obey by the order and direction of the president. Discourteous, disorderly, or contemptuous conduct shall be regarded as, regarded as a breach of the privileges of the commission and shall be dealt with as the commission directs. And then I would remind everybody, when you step up, please give your name and your address.
Thank you, Michael. Before, um, I take questions from.
Yes.
Can you stand up and turn around and show that to the public, please?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
So the, the part, hopefully you can see this area in yellow would remain, uh, R one zoning specification. The area that's here in green is currently zoned R one, that's the area that we're asking to be rezoned commercial moderate. And the area just to the south of that, in this red area, is already zoned commercial moderate. And so the only difference here is I highlighted this blue area here, this indicates which property Mr. Neder already owns and the other owners retain this parcel.
Can we ask him to clarify the owners, because I won't get the.
Okay, we will, we can tell, we tell you. Okay, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
Yeah.
Did everybody see it? Or, okay, alright. Anybody want to speak in favor of this case? In favor? Same done? Anybody have any questions or want, or opposed to case? And sir, step, state your name, address, please?
Good evening. My name is Gordon O'Neil.
If you want to wrap that up. So you don't have to.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Gordon O'Neil. I reside at thirteen Kipling Drive, Valparaiso, four, six, three, eight, three. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the zoning change. I ask you to consider and advise on two concerns that I and others in my neighborhood have associated with this change. I ask that if granted, it is the final change to a commercial zone on the property. I ask that it be confirmed, confirmed that this is not going to result in the request that the portion still zoned residential R one, three, five, one, dash, zero, zero, six, then become under consideration to be commercial. I ask it be to be documented and confirmed, the twenty acres will remain zoned residential. My second concern is the commercial property only have street access via US Route six, and that this will not result in it having a street or alley access to Meridian Road, or most of all, the residential Kipling and Shakespeare Drive, which is a residential street, and should not be burdened with commercial traffic. If granting the request does not allow the change of any more of the residential portion to commercial, or it results in the commercial property having eaten ingress or egress onto, uh, through Meridian or Kipling Drive, I remain in objection. But if that twenty acres are going to remain residential, and if the commercial portion that you're changing will only have ingress and egress to US Route six, I will not have any objection to it. I wish to thank you for listening to me and for your due consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to speak? Yes, ma'am, come, come up to speaker, please.
Here, here.
She hold it a little way from her face.
My, my name is Judith Upton. My husband and I reside at three Tyson Road. Is this better?
It's fine.
Is this okay?
Yeah.
We live at three Tyson Road, Valparaiso, Indiana, four, six, three, eight, five. We are almost directly across Meridian Road from this proposed zoning change parcel. I'd like to agree with my neighbor, um, and I would also like to say, a rezoning property or zoning is not to be taken lightly. And we appreciate very much your invitation to speak. It's such a serious thing because we have lived in, on our property for more than twenty-six years. We chose that property because of its residential designation and the residential de- designation of the surrounding properties. Um, I disagree with you, sir. Um, there are some very important environmental issues that need to be taken care of. One is, there is a small parcel, only twenty acres of woods, and then just to the north of it is a designated wetland. That whole area is filled with wildlife. The water in our neighborhood, every single home is fed by an underground well, an underground aquifer. We don't know what it is you plan to do with the land to increase, to square it up. For what purpose? Is it a pig farm? Is it a motorcycle repair shop? Is it a, what, what is it? And what are you gonna, what are you gonna dump on the land? We are concerned about water quality, air quality, noise, pollution, the increased traffic on the Meridian Road, which has already been substantial since Luke's was, uh, enlarged. And we're most concerned about the degradation, degradation of our residential community. We, um, are certain that any change, any further change will, uh, continue to devalue our property. And that is something that we are, feel very strongly about. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else would like to speak at this time? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Joe Philbin. I live in sixteen Kipling Drive. I just, I echo most of their comments, but I wanted to add one more thing, just to the specific nature of his business. I was wondering, this is just a question. He's allowed to burn waste material as, as landscapers, is that correct? And so now is he going to be allowed to burn closer to the homes? I mean, it's already, you know, I, I think a lot of people are already smelling when he was burning, concerned about the fires. And now he's six acres closer to a residential property, if, if that's what he's going to be doing. So that's my only additional.
Alright, thank you. Excuse me. Anybody else want to speak, please?
There was a George Biggs that signed the.
Yeah. Okay, yes.
My name is George Biggs, and I am a resident right next to Neder's landscaping. And I have no complaints of the landscaping business or any of the others, and as far as I'm concerned, you could pass it tonight and let him have it as a, as a commercial. Thank you.
What's your address?
Twenty-seven East US Highway six.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak at this time? Yes, ma'am, there's the speaker.
Hi, um, my name is Beth, Beth Mark. Um, we live next to.
Uh, your adre, your address, your adre, name and address.
Twenty-nine East US Highway six.
Thank you, thank you.
So we basically live, the landscaper, then George, and then us. Um, we, I pretty much echo what they are saying, but I echo what George is saying, but I don't buy a strip club. You don't want a liquor store. It's all, you know, I, we don't want teen, rip rap, things crap. I'm sorry, I didn't say it. We don't want that kind of stuff right there. We don't want it all to turn into a liquor store, you know, uh, the drugstore, something. We like the openness. I'm, I'm saying same thing that the other two have said earlier. I like the openness. That's why he moved here three years ago. It's beautiful. I, we don't really have a problem with the rezoning, as long as we would like to know what it is, like she said. It all depends on what it is and what's gonna go in and who says that, what is going in, because we keep hearing different things. We heard one thing, then we heard another thing that was going in. I'm not too keen on one of them that they were trying to put in there, you know, because we didn't want constant cars coming in, because we heard it was gonna be a shortage. And constant people and all this and that. I don't, anyways, I, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I mean, I, I see both sides. We don't have too much of a problem, but with the rezoning of Route six, yes, it gets hairy, it gets crazy, because we live right off of it. Yes, we have to deal with the traffic. But it all depends on, like what she said, depends on what's going in, because we have kids. I mean, I don't wanna hear gunshots. I mean, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but what if something goes in there? All the cuts, I would love to know what is going in first, before we agree to that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, I'm gonna turn over back to.
Yeah, thank you.
Attorney, please?
Yeah, the use is that we're not limiting any of these, we're simply asking that there would be the uses permitted in the commercial moderate. And important to keep in mind that most of the property is zoned for those types of uses already. We're simply looking to allow to square off the zoning, make it a more consistent line, and we think a more efficient use of property. The process, I'm not, uh, these people are, that have spoken this evening are probably not as familiar as, as we all are as being part of this. But any of these uses that go on there, any of the development of the site, all of those things are subject to a great deal of scrutiny well beyond this meeting. So that would include all of the various items, traffic, stormwater, light pollution, noise pollution, any of those things. Those are all provided for and protected within your unified development ordinance, because the county does anticipate these types of uses existing. And by virtue of enacting that ordinance, you've identified how do you protect and preserve adjacent property us, uh, uses together and let them work compatibly. So all of those things would naturally be, be addressed, um, as part of any further review. Uh, with respect to the environmental sensitivity, I recognize, I've worked on a lot of development up in and around that area, including Timberland Estate subdivision, which I know a couple of these, uh, folks live in, and I, I think perhaps maybe even some board members might live in or around. And so there are environmental features there, uh, but there are none within the area that we're proposing to be rezoned. Uh, Timberland Estates does have a lot of wetland, does have a lot of conservation area, but that's not included within the area that we're asking as part of the rezoning. So none of those areas, uh, would be impacted at all. Again, access to the site, uh, that's all, again, governed through your unified development ordinance. But because of the location of the property, the, uh, Indiana Department of Transportation will be involved in that. So again, all of those protections are included within your ordinance, and much scrutiny will come long beyond, uh, this hearing this evening. So again, we think it's a reasonable request. We're not asking that the entirety of the property be changed, only a small portion of it, to allow what we think is a better and more consistent use of the land in the area. And I, I think I've answered the questions, at least to my ability, uh, as to, as they've been asked so far.
There was one other question about the twenty acres. Would that remain residential?
That's, that's not even subject to the rezoning tonight. All we're looking for is.
That question came up.
Yes.
At this time, it would remain.
That's correct. That is not even part of the petition.
Yeah, my understanding. Uh, timeout. You want, sir, if you want, you, you have a question? No. It's time for the question. You could come up and, uh, state your name and address, if you have a question.
Uh, Keith Upton, I live at three Tyson Road, Valparaiso, Indiana, four, six, three, eight, five. And my question is, by definition, what are the parameters of the zoning change?
Okay, you were, answer that later, yeah. Answer your questions. Anybody else have any new, new items, new questions?
Thank you. Uh, I just want to.
Name?
Oh, name, Gordon O'Neil, thirteen Kipling Drive, Valparaiso, Indiana, four, six, three, three. My apologies. Um, my questions remain unanswered by the petitioner. Uh, what I've heard from him is that he keeps referring to laws. We were asking for him and his, the current owners to stipulate to, if they're saying these are not a big deal. And the law protects it, that it should state clearly that in their petition, they have no intention of changing it to commercial, and they have no intention of any egress or egress out of US Route six. There's nothing in the law that stops them from making that pledge to their neighbors. I hope that was not in the line. I thank you for letting me speak again.
And I'm sorry, I did miss, oh, I'm sorry.
If you have new questions, come up, please, yeah.
Judith Upton, three Tyson Road, Valparaiso, Indiana. I think, uh, what I meant when I said that rezoning is a serious business, what it does for us landowners, all of us, is it gives us a measure of predictability that we might not have by just simply following the laws that are on the books and that, the laws or the, uh, the rules that people may choose or choose to bend or choose to keep in place. The zoning is the first thing that a person needs to adjust before they can say, you said you want to, uh, square up the property. My question, and I think the question of others, is for what purpose? It certainly isn't, I mean, because it's squared up, you could then augment a business that, in my view, is a nuisance with the burning and the traffic and the, so I don't want to have more nuisance in my neighborhood. I want to retain my residential neighborhood as a residence, my primary residence, the place where I raise my children and where my grandchildren come. That is my beef. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any new questions? Same done?
Okay, and two things, I guess, uh, predictability, I think that's part of what we're given with your ordinance, is because it does identify how the property ultimately can be used. There's a whole list of items it could be used for. There are development standards that are put in place. All of those things are what provide the predictability. And again, going through this process as many times as we all have, recognize that nothing comes through your stormwater and management development process without a great deal of adherence to what is predictable. Access, I did fail to mention that. Uh, I guess with respect to access, I think that would also fall in line with your engineering department, because it may well prove out to be that they would look at the site and what they believe would be the best access to the property, how that would best be fulfilled. And to try and limit that now, when further engineering would review, review would warrant an access point on Meridian Road, uh, we would now be preempting that, and I don't think that that would be appropriate to do that, to, to tie the hands of the engineering department in that way. But I can tell you that the northern twenty acres is not subject of any part of this rezoning petition before you.
One more time, any questions that did not get answered or new questions? Go ahead, sir.
Alright, Joe Philbin again, sixteen Kipling Drive. My only question, you know, on this predictability issue, and may, maybe you've been told that we haven't. Is, is, what's the current plan? I, I get you're preserving the right, you know, to do whatever you need to do, but what is the, the current plan for the property? Are you planning to keep it as your own business? Are you planning to sell it and do something else? I mean, that seems to be a, a basic part of this whole process, right? So can you tell us what the plan is?
Alright, no, it comes to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any new questions or questions that weren't answered? Michael, you had something you want?
I think maybe the petitioner should address the questions that we've talked about first, don't you?
Yeah, that's true.
I couldn't hear what it over.
Any other que, I thought he did.
But last question, did you correct?
Yeah, okay, I couldn't hear what you said, because, because they're monitored.
Eventually he asked what was gonna be the uses of the property.
Okay, alright, well, within CM is those listed permitted uses, but then I'll let Mr. Neder speak for himself, and then.
There you go. So, um, I, I run a landscape business, and, uh, I was able to purchase, uh, I believe seven point six, seven acres, uh, from the Luke oil, uh, to twenty feet off of my office building. And that property went back, uh, and evened up with the back line, as you could see there, of where Luke oil owns. So the, the blue square on his paper, uh, shows what I was able to purchase. And that property is zoned partially residential, part commercial. My plan is to continue my business there, uh, to clean up the property. Now that I own it, I do not lease it and rent it anymore. And I would like to have it all zoned one zone. I do not want to have, you know, part commercial, part residential. It went from thirty-five acres being a landscape center, um, at the property of fifteen East, to now it went to seven point six, seven acres. So it downsized by one-fifth, or four-fifths, um, you know, it, it went smaller. So the size of where, what I'm able to do just went, just went to one-fifth of the size of what it currently, what it originally was, um, allocated as, as a, as a nursery. And to have the zoning line cleaned up, it, it, to have. And to have the zoning line cleaned up, it, it, to have an even line running across the property allows the twenty acres to the north to remain a residential parcel. Uh, and then along six, my parcel would not have access to the north. Uh, my, I, I have two, two driveways, that there are two addresses at that property of eleven and fifteen. So my access is off of Highway Six. Then if, if that line would be, uh, drawn over there, there would be a commercial parcel and there would be a residential parcel, uh, you know, all, all in one. So what I, I, I want is my property zoned all commercial instead of, of res- partial residential, part commercial. Um, and that's, does, did that, I think, answer the question that was asked, um-
So, thank you. Thank you. Do you have another, another question yet? Uh, to come up and state your name?
Uh, Joe Philbin again, sixteen Kipling. No, I get that. So you brought up a rumor of a storage locker facility. So that, that was kind of my question. You're, you're doing this, I, I totally understand your answer. You're doing this for running your business and you have a smaller footprint in your business. You want it to be entirely commercial, but you're not doing it because you are in negotiations to sell it to someone else to do something else with the property?
I-
So, answer, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. You want to respond? Yes.
Uh, the, I bought seven point six seven, four, seven acres. I'm, I'm not sure exactly the, the, the small little numbers on there, but I plan on intending to keep that, uh, the original owner, Ted Clark, was my, uh, wife's grandfather. He ran a, 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 a very nice landscape business there. And I would like, uh, you know, that to be passed down generation to generation. That's my intention. Uh, there are many things in life that affect, you know, life as it goes on, but my intention as, as a father of a small, of, of my son, I'd like to, to see that passed on, uh, and continue the legacy. And, and, uh, I have no, no personal advice on buying seven point four, seven, six, seven acres to sell anywhere.
Hey, thank you. I'm gonna call on a, a counsel. Can you explain under CM, what's allowed under CM?
Well, I don't necessarily want to read, read the entire list of permitted uses, but CM is moderate intensity, commercial district. It's intend- intended for a wide, wide range of retail, commercial services, eating and entertainment establishments, moderate impact uses. It's, doesn't have any of the, um, it's not industrial zoning, so we don't have to worry about any of the strip clubs or things like that. But basically, it's the moderate intensity uh, CM district that exists now, I believe, to the west of the parcel they're attempting to rezone. So same type of issues, but there's permitted list of things probably besides our agricultural that we allow everywhere. Um, the commercial uses are basically your normal automotive, bank, dry cleaning, plant nursery, recreation, restaurant, retail, different intensities to give a flavor of the moderate commercial use.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the, uh, public hearing and turn it over to Board Luther.
And one of those uses is plant nursery, that's using it for, so that's consistent with, uh, from what I've seen out there, it looks very consistent with the current existing practices.
I would just say be cognizant of your neighbors regarding burning issues, and assuming you're gonna be storing chemicals on site. I would think for landscaping, landscaping chemicals, correct? None at all? No fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides?
I, I, I've, I've got oil and, um, you know, a drum that I-
Okay. I just assumed that landscaping, you have herbicides, pesticides.
A lot of subcontract on that.
Okay, okay. I just wanted, because I, I know somebody had mentioned that they're on wells and-
I, I am-
Okay, and any of that water being contaminated by chemicals, but other than that?
Right? So, yeah, that'd be more consistent with like lawn care services. He's landscaping services. He actually did. And yes, I am a Timberland Estates, uh, owner of a home. So I think I can knock out a lot of this. Uh, one of their most, I think the Timberland neighbors' biggest concern is that we cannot connect a business, like say you develop this property as a business. Can it connect through the residential property to Kipling? Cause Kipling was initially intended to tee up against this residential property. So Kipling is literally dead-ended against that residential property. I think Timberland neighbors just want to make sure that there's not gonna be business traffic coming through. Cause I think it would be very fair to make a deal that any property that's residential comes off of six and any business property, business traffic comes off of, sorry. Any residential entrances into that property come off of Meridian and any entrances or the businesses come off of six. I think everyone in Timberland would be in agreement with that.
I could agree. I mean, on my property, I-
We can make that a stipulation and then it comes back to it.
But listen, it's gotta only be on his property. Unless he owns that twenty acre residential, he can't make any commitments about that.
Okay, but we can say that all the business property-
His request, we control his commercial access to six, but we can't jump to the property that he doesn't have ownership of.
Can we say that all that business property that we're granting cannot be accessed from Meridian?
Maybe to clarify something, you gotta keep in mind you're dealing with two different properties with two sets of owners.
Who owns that little north of Luke?
I'm getting that. Mr. Neder knows the box. It's neatly defined right there. As you talk about the rest of all that-
Can we see that?
Yeah.
I ca- we couldn't see that.
I'm just, the rest, very confused with who the-
Property.
Yes, so who owns what?
So, is this, Mike Neder owns this area in the blue.
Yeah.
Who owns this? This is Luke Oil.
Okay.
Okay.
This is Luke Oil and that is-
So what property are we talking about right now?
The property that we're talking to rezone is right here.
Okay, and then who owns this right here?
Ted Clark, Terry here, own this land here. Their, their land is-
In a neighborhood road, literally a one road, zero other choices, literally. If anyone connects to the road here, it's, it's home.
So this, so does it make sense? Okay, so-
I believe that is-
This gentleman's property is what?
Mike Neder's is in the blue.
Is he Mike? Okay.
His property is, this is the, it's-
Okay, okay, okay.
Mike owns this.
Okay.
Terry and Ted, um, this will be elsewhere. The petition before you, that's the result, the area that's in green.
Okay.
Commercial model.
Okay, so this is two different owners.
So are you representing both?
They're both part of, on this petition. They're all on this.
Okay, so this is two different owners then?
That's correct. This area-
It's already zoned.
Is all zoned commercial model.
So then they don't, if they, if we want them to abide by what I just said, then they don't, he can get his commercial and they need to agree to get their commercial. These are two different owners.
Well, they, they submitted them both together. He's rep-
Well, then they have to come back. The other-
Well, he's representing them.
Well, let's go back to the other question. How is it ever getting to six on the residential? Or how's the commercial going up through?
Through, through the business property, through the residential.
Yeah, but you're talking about the existing twenty acres of residential that were not yourself.
A business could build a pass through the residential to the neighborhood. They can't, a business can't connect to a residential.
No.
Then that's, that's all we care about.
Let me, can I clar- can I clarify something, just so you all got the right frame? I know he's got a sketch. But if you look on your monitors, this piece right here-
Yeah.
Is Clark Cook. Mr. Neder is simply right here.
Yeah.
His is pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
So the questions you're posing are, what's prohibiting these people to go through their property, put some commercial here, continue a road, go through the residence? And up there. That is the question.
Yes, understood.
And, Mr. Chairman, could I offer that we can make this rezoning conditional on just having access off of six to the commercial property, not through?
Yeah, I-
That's fine. You could, that's your discretion.
Okay, I still, can I, I, this was the question I had at the very beginning. Um, and the gentlewoman over there did talk about that, this is serious when we decide, when we decide to rezone because it's permanent. And something happens, you don't own the property anymore, somebody can come in and do whatever they want. And I did have a question. You said that the other CM zoned property didn't have any restriction on the permitted uses at all. But I am wondering if that would be possible to do that. And I think that would make everybody feel a heck of a lot better if we could restrict it.
Okay. They're looking for commitment today. Um, I mean, you can commit to yours. They're not here this evening. But we, I mean, if we need to get that answer for it, we're just gonna need to get that answer for it. They need to be able to be here to make that commitment.
What don't we want?
I mean-
In the zone, wait, hold, hold on Bill. What, what doesn't the commission want in CM?
Everything but the landscape business.
That, no, then we should be going to the, we should go to variance then for that.
Okay.
Cause then, I mean, we're on Route Six, next to commercial zoning, off of a gas station, off of Meridian. We're not out in the middle of the country attempting to rezone the CM. So we have to be careful. I think in a summary, we have a landsc- we have a nursery that wants to continue business. We have no idea for how long that will be. It could be several generations or five years. We don't know. But we don't want to have a commercial zone that only has one use here.
I was still on my talk. Can I go back? So, like I said, the biggest issue with Timberland is protecting the wetlands, protecting stormwater. And that all has to go, by the way, to the neighbors in Timberland. That all gets taken care of by engineers before anything's built. If a Dollar General wants to go there, which is down the road, that has to make sure that it's not going to hurt the wetlands, it's not gonna infiltrate your wells, it's not gonna cause problems down the, down the road. It's not gonna cause flooding. That's all taken care of. The biggest issue is we're taking a zoning and changing it. And is, um, adult entertainment business and commercial?
No.
Absolutely. No, so that can't even, we always take that out. Period. If it's allowed a use, we do not, almost always.
Not always take out that for the record.
A CM you see there to spell that.
Sorry.
That's right. I guess there, there are two things that-
We have to have a zoning district for all uses. So we do not exclude any uses from our zoning board. Does that make sense? If there's a, if there is a use out there, it fits into one of our zoning districts.
Okay, it's not allowed.
Permission.
And this.
I'm sorry.
No, I feel like I'm making some points. Okay, so I feel very good about this. Um, also on the, uh, can we bring up the satellite imaging?
Sure.
So, this is the property that we're looking to become?
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Well, obviously it's already being used. So I wanted to bring that up, that nothing should change. You know, like, he's probably already burnt, I mean, I gotta watch my eyes. I'm not a lawyer. Okay, so right here is already being used. So they're just trying to pretty much make it into like consistency that they're already using the property for. All right, so I'm totally a hundred percent for this. But Mike, you just will be cognizant of that, right?
Keith, I see. Um, I, I understand what a neighbor is. I just had the Brooks go in my backyard. Um, so I understand, you know, when you build somewhere and then something happens, that you're like, oh, it's really frustrating. And I don't know what the, the rules and regulations are with roads and, and things like that, but I don't think you can go through a, a business to put, like, yeah, put a road through my property. And I don't think there's enough room there to have a turning lane to come off of Route Six to put a road for two-lane traffic, which is a hundred feet wide. I, 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 I haven't measured, you know, for any of, of, of that accessibility, but I don't think that's, that's allowed.
First of all, it is.
Okay.
Dollar General is an example, so- Yeah, so they would have to get all the engineering and everything down, but the, the whole point is that we look at this property as, in a week, I don't even want to say it out loud. You sell to somebody else. That could become a mini mall, that could become any of those commercial uses tomorrow. So-
The twenty acres?
Oh, yeah. No, your, no, your commercial business property, we have to consider it as if, like, tomorrow it becomes something else. That's how we have to look at things. So we're looking at it as, yes, somebody can put a road through, but you're saying you cannot put a road through and then in, and then into residential property?
If the recommendation to the commissioners includes that this newly rezoned CM, the existing CM owned by the petitioner, or has access only to Route Six, fine.
And that, the Clarks and the-
I'm not talking, I'm just the commercial property on six.
But we're asking-
Parcels.
That's right. And, and, and we're fine with that.
We're asking to approve this.
That, that the access, if limiting-
And then this is two, two. Yeah, no, can we include it for both? No.
Yes.
They're not here, right?
Well, they're, but they're, they're part of the petition. And so the limitation, the, and the limitation, uh, access to commercial-
I have no more questions.
Yeah.
They're good?
It's, it's already there. It's not gonna change.
Permission?
I'm good.
You finished? Okay. Kevin, you have any questions?
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve case zero, Z zero, twenty twenty-four dash ten.
Recommend it, recommend it.
Or make a recommendation to the county commissioners, who will have another meeting yet, uh, subject to the, uh, newly or proposed commercial parcels to have only access to Route Six.
Second.
Here we go, a motion and a second? The commissioner, second. Is it valid, Paul?
Yes.
I need a pen.
I did. Okay.
You have a pen?
Yeah.
Sure.
Anymore?
For case Z zero, twenty twenty-four dash ten. Six, yes, zero, no. Motion passed. As for recommendation to the commissioners.
When is that, uh, commissioner meeting?
Three weeks from, uh, next Tuesday, so four weeks from now.
So the public knows, okay. We don't have exact date yet?
I do, I just don't have my calendar.
Okay, alright.
I can tell.
They could call, do you have, yeah, we really should give that to the, to the public, so.
Uh, no. Oh.
You said three weeks or four weeks?
Four weeks from this past Tuesday.
It's on the nineteenth of November.
Commissioner.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, November nineteenth. Same. Same place, okay.
November nineteenth, ten AM.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, motion passed, so thank you. Okay, you're welcome.
That'll be on the schedule of the county commissioner.
Correct.
Correct. The agenda.
Okay. We have some discussion items, comprehensive plan update, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Hey, sir, can you take it outside?
Excuse me, we're gonna, meeting still, could we?
Hey, sir. Yeah, outside, yeah, we got more meetings, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just an update, um. Last time we, well, we created our comprehensive plan in twenty oh one, twenty-three years.
How many of you remember it?
I do, but we, we finished it in twenty oh one. We started in ninety-seven.
Yeah, we were.
I was in high school.
Yeah.
How's that make you feel?
I, I was here.
Horrible, thank you.
There, there was a land use component as well as a thoroughfare plan, and, uh, I got some information back in the day. Parks Department was very young, they didn't have money. They also did a park master plan. Since that time, the parks kinda got some legs and they just recently done their park master plan. Usually you, uh, update these things every ten years or so, so it's been twenty-three, so it's high time to do it. You'll find that a lot of things have changed in the last twenty-three years, but there's a lot of things that remain the same. And the purpose of the comprehensive plan, it's a very public involvement intensive process. Not only the elective officials, but, uh, community leaders, businesses, the residents, schools, et cetera. Uh, get a pulse on what the people the county sees are visioning and what guides us when we make decisions. And that's very important for, uh, bodies such as yours. You're making decisions that are going to, uh, affect the future. And you're hoping you're making a good decision that represents the best majority of the thinking of their, of their county residents. Uh, sometimes a comprehensive plan is helpful for like when you're doing very large developments and non-thoroughfare plan. We've always had this road, someday we had this dream, this road is gonna come through here. As long as it's covered, it's an example in a thoroughfare comprehensive plan, then we can make requirements of development to do that. So, it's a good tool for the plan commission in our office, especially as we go forward. It's also a good tool for the redevelopment commission as part of their mission, you know, to looking into opportunities, uh, for maybe. Incentivizing, uh, uh, development of some kind that fits within the mold of the comprehensive plan and gives guidance to them too. And to that end, the redevelopment commission has kindly offered to pay for. The comprehensive plan for you as the body that has to adopt. But the Greek, and I'll let Commissioner Rick speak to that, because her, her kind of brainchild. But, uh, they'd be willing to pay the freight for it, so we can get an updated plan for you to use, as well as others.
Well, I just think this is something that needs to be done. I have no idea when the county council has the ability or the will to fund it. And I just think that because of the, it's needed for the plan commission, needed for the redevelopment commission, needed for. Plan department and everything related to, um, growth and infrastructure development in the county. That it's, um, I think it's just about time that we do it. The other thing is, um, we really need to approve this through the plan commission and discuss the scope. At this meeting and have you approve the scope of this process, so.
So I prepared this pretty much what's called, uh, quality-based selection, RFQ, it's called request for qualifications. And, uh, simply put, it's just an update of our effort twenty-one with fresh information. I also added in there some emphasis on economic redevelopment opportunities. As well as, uh, asking for very robust, uh, public involvement process. I think that's very, very important when you do these things. And it also includes an update of our thoroughfare plan, cause a lot's changed in the last twenty-three. In summary, that's what we're asking for here. Um, I am ready to go tomorrow. We'll go ahead and send this to a list of consultants that we put together. And my aim is to receive those in November. If we have to do interviews, we'll do those in a week after, and then have a recommendation. And then we will select a consultant based on qualifications. We'd negotiate a price since it's professional services, we can do that. And if we can't come to terms with number one, we'll go to number two. But my goal is to have a contract signed by the redevelopment, they will be the contract holder of the contract. But you will be pretty much in the driver's seat as far as how it goes. So you will have to eventually, I figure if we start first quarter twenty twenty-five, probably won't be until the fall. At the earliest of next year before it's done. At that time, it'll be brought to you for your review and adoption. Plus, you're gonna be involved in the process throughout.
Okay, just, just as a suggestion, uh, most people don't realize how expensive it is to do a comprehensive plan. It could run us a couple hundred thousand dollars or more, and that'd be reasonable. But I think we should look at, uh, what we paid originally, just to kinda put the public's mind at ease. And maybe some of the people on the political side too, because it's going to be a large chunk of change. To get a competent, good, comprehensive plan. It's, my, my view is it's gonna save us a lot of money too. When I first started with comprehensive plan, they decided to do a contract with one of the universities. Unfortunately, it fell way short of our goals. And we had four or five really good members of plan commission working on writing this thing. But it was frustrating when the contract consultant was coming back with pictures of, uh, malls of America and. Other places in Indiana, uh, it just wasn't consistent with what we were in Northwest Indiana. So that's one of those caveats, but on the other hand, we need to help the public grasp the fact that this is not going to be an inexpensive thing. And I think most of us believe it should be professionally done. I certainly do, having had the other experience that. Uh, wasn't at the level of what we went to on the second go around with it, when we completed it.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I had suggested we do an RFQ instead of an RFP, because you don't wanna take the lowest price. You wanna make sure that when we do this, that we, you know, it's done to the level of, um.
Professionalism.
Yeah.
As, as an engineer, I'll tell you, I love RFQ because I've seen the other side of all this.
Yeah.
When you get the lowest bit, it's not necessarily the best.
The way it's structured, first and, a couple of questions, I know it's getting late, but. In twenty oh one, HNTB did the, uh, land use component. And the thoroughfare DLC was a sub to them. Uh, I believe you paid somewhere over a hundred fifty thousand for that effort. That was twenty-three years ago. I would dare say, you know, I've added some extra emphasis in there. I wanna revisit the thoroughfare plan. I would say you're talking definitely north of two hundred thousand, maybe almost three hundred thousand dollars here.
And understand that staff in my department created the overlay maps and the addendums that helped. Keep the cost down a little bit, probably another fifty thousand.
And in the ra- the rating system, I think it's real important to get someone familiar with the county, so I asked them to show. There's a lot of people who do comprehensive plans for cities and towns. The concept is the same, but the audience is a little bit different, so I'm adding emphasis in the scoring. Show me the experience you've done for county clients, cause I think counties are a little bit different than cities and towns. Principle's the same, but there's differences.
And, and we might be even more different because of the diversity of business, industry, commerce. Uh, heavy industry, residential and agriculture, uh, there's only a few of us that have that bland. So it makes it even more of a chore to do this right.
So I don't know, you know, we didn't vote or anything. I, I would certainly ask for your support as we go on this venture. I think it's, uh, something that's long overdue.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we just support the efforts of the county to do a comprehensive plan update and do it as soon as possible.
I'll second.
Okay, we got motion, a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Also, all opposed, same name?
Thank you very much.
Any other, uh, visitor in front of us, Mike or you? Okay, we have motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
Second, okay. All in favor to adjourn?
Yeah.
Need is adjourned.
She'll, she'll wake up, man.